They did a great job. Good evening Yorktown and welcome to the town board meeting for Thursday, November 5th, 2020. If I can ask everyone to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag. Try to keep in sync with everybody. It's challenging.
It is very challenging.
And if everyone can join me for a moment of silence, as Veterans Day upon us, we want to keep in our prayers, our amazing, amazing veterans who've defended our freedoms, want to pray for the 233,000 individuals we've lost to COVID and the millions more who continue to battle the COVID virus. We also want to say a special prayer for our nation as we emerge from yet another election. And we want to thank our election workers and the voters who came out and, and we, we pray for a, a respectful process to come to a swift conclusion. Thank you. We'll do introductions quickly. Again, my name is Matt Slater, Town Supervisor, joined by Councilwoman Alice Roker, Councilman Tom Diana. We have Councilman Ed Lacterman.
Why is he in the dark?
I don't know.
State officials.
And we have, and we have Councilman Vishnu Patel on the phone. We're also joined by our Town Clerk Diana Quast and our Highway Superintendent Dave Paganelly and Adam Rodriguez, our Town Attorney. I'm going to just give a very brief update for the town. Let's start with COVID. We currently have 38 active cases in this, in the town of Yorktown. As a reminder, active cases means number of individuals who are currently contagious. They've tested positive within the last two weeks. And we had the Commissioner of Health, Dr. Shalita Amler, join me a few weeks ago to provide some more insight on what these numbers mean. Online on the town's website as well as on our YouTube page. But we currently have 38. I just really want to emphasize mask wearing, social distancing, washing your hands. And really, I think would make more important at this point, if you're not feeling well, please stay home. It is so important right now and, and we've seen regionally in Westchester County, our numbers continue to climb. We are now at an infection rate, infection rate in Westchester of two and a half percent. And we are now at the same level, we're reporting the same active cases daily that we saw in mid-May. So it's critically important and we were warned about this as, as, as we came back down, as we flattened the curve, we were warned about a potential of a second wave as the weather got colder and we did more activities indoors. And this is what we're seeing. And so you know the three, which is wearing a mask, social distancing, washing your hands. But if you're not feeling well, please stay home and, and please contact your medical provider to make sure that, that you can get a COVID test. And we have many, many healthcare providers here in Yorktown that are providing both the rapid COVID test and the PCR test as well. We have a new flag pole that was installed recently here in Yorktown and I want to thank our Town Clerk Diana Quast, our Highway Superintendent Dave Paganelly and, and our Parks and Rec staff who were assisted in this. We are transferring the poll over at Veterans Field. Currently, the original poll was on a hill. And for those who've joined us at several of their flag ceremonies, it posed really a safety concern because depending on the day, if it was wet, someone could slip. And also the positioning of it, at the current positioning of it makes it more prominent on Veterans Road and at Veterans Field, which is, which is terrific. And so it's great because we have Veterans Day right around the corner. We have our reverse Veterans Day parade happening on Sunday. And I want to thank Paul Martin for coming up with a very, very creative way for us to give a proper salute and thank you to our veterans. Our veterans are going to be socially distant, spread out in front of the American Legion and the VFW. And for those who'd like to join us, we're going to be meeting behind the Acme Shopping Center. And we're going to do a nice car parade right up Maple Hill and turning right onto Veterans Road. So we can give a nice salute to the men and women of Yorktown who've, who've defended our freedoms and rightfully so. We have Fall Farm Weekend coming this weekend. It's already been recognized by Westchester Magazine as one of the top things to do this weekend and the weather is going to be absolutely great. So please feel free to come out. They have eight participating farms across Yorktown. There is a, there is a passport that we're including for, for the kids. They can go get their passports stamped at one of the farms that they attend. And each of the farms has, has some activities and each of the farms has some specific items that, that they're going to be highlighting. We'll be over kicking this thing off at Fable Farm Saturday morning at 11:00. And Fable Farm and of course, our friends at Thompson Cider Mill are going to be, they've been teaming up this entire fall season. And so Thompson Cider Mill is going to have their fantastic apple cider for sale. And of course, Fable Farm off, right off of Route 134 in Kitchwan, one of the gems of Yorktown.
Excuse me Supervisor?
Yes.
If you don't have a passport, will the enhanced driver's license work?
Only for you Councilman.
Okay, okay.
I also want to remind everyone that our Coalition on Community Safety and Engagement is meeting again next Thursday, November 12th. We have another work group scheduled that we're going to have another presentation from Chief Robert Noble. We're looking forward to that. I know that our Highway Superintendent is going to touch upon it, but we did send two letters up to DOT in the last two weeks. First requesting their review of the traffic lights on 202 over by the Deconic right by Lowe's. We want to make sure that those, that the, that the traffic safety controls and the synchronization, synchronization of those lights are in fact continuing. And so we've sent the letter up to the Region Eight Director Lance McMillan for his assistance. And earlier today, we sent another letter that a constituent requested, requesting that DOT perform an investigation into a potential traffic light on Route 35 in Quaker Church Road. As everyone knows, that could be a very challenging, really T-intersection, especially more complicated when people are utilizing the North County Trailway. So we want to make sure that our, our automobiles are safe. We want to make sure that our pedestrians are safe, people who are riding their bikes and, or if you're like me and you're running across the road on, using the bike trail on Sunday mornings. So we did ask DOT to perform the necessary review to see if it warrants a traffic light there as well. Last two things, the library has expanded its operating hours, which we're very happy to hear. They will be, the porch pickup window service is now occurring Monday, 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., Tuesday and Wednesday from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., Thursday from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. And Saturday from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. And the building will now be open Tuesday and Wednesday from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And now on Saturdays from 9:30 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. So we appreciate Paparazzi and the library staff finding more ways to serve our great community. Also want to remind folks that on November 7th and November 14th, as part of the Revolutionary War 250th Anniversary, Yorktown Heritage Preservation Commission will be hosting on the Government Access Channel, a recorded performance titled Washington and His Spies. This is recorded at the Landmarked Community Church of Yorktown. And the program, and the program is by the award-winning duo Anne and Ridley Enslo and will be broadcasted twice on the Yorktown Television Channels, which is Optimum Channel 20, Files Channel 33, on consecutive Saturdays on November 7th and November 14th at 7:30 p.m. Looking forward to that performance. And lastly, I want to thank our friends at Club Fit. We've been trying to find new ways to engage our seniors and make sure that they remain as healthy as they can be during these challenging times. And thanks to our great partnership with Club Fit, we've been able to arrange for two recordings of a chair yoga session for seniors and our elderly that we're going to be, we're going to be broadcasting, I believe, next week as well. And there will be a secondary session where we are able to tape a cardio session again for our senior and elderly population. Just different ways while you're home to stay, to stay healthy. And it's always easier to stay healthy than get healthy. So we're trying to make sure that you have as much information and tips as, as possible. And I want to thank Neil Reno Driscoll from our Senior Nutrition Center and Rosemarie Panio, who heads up the Senior Advisory Committee for helping, helping put that together. And that's where we stand. That's tonight. That's the end of my, end of my report. And I'm going to turn it over to the, the Council. I'll see if Councilwoman Roker has a report for the town.
Yes, Matthew. I'd like to share a portion of a letter that I received from a young man who's going for his Eagle Scout Award. His name is Ben Brown and he is a member of Troop 164. I'm writing to tell you all about my Boy Scout Eagle project honoring Tuskegee Airmen James Rushen, who is buried in Yorktown Heights, New York. The Tuskegee Airmen were a heroic and groundbreaking group of African-American pilots known for their courage during World War II. And we are honored that Mr. Rushen called Yorktown home. After Mr. Rushen's service with the Airmen, he went on to become a member of the NYPD Narcotics Squad. When he was buried, he was only issued a standard military plaque. He had no headstone. James was a national and local hero and deserves our recognition and honor. For my project, I will be purchasing a three-by-four headstone as well as constructing and installing a weatherproof information box at the grave. The box will feature his life as an Airmen and a decorated NYPD detective. And he goes on to say that as part of my Eagle project, I'm doing my own fundraising. I hope you'll help me with my efforts to give Mr. Rushen the honor and recognition he has deserved. The budget for the project is $4,000 and any donation would be very much appreciated. He goes on to give me a email address, actually two of them, which I'm not going to even try to put on TV, but if you want them, Diana Quast, the Town Clerk of the Eagle Town Hall, and as for Diana, she has a copy of this letter as well. And I think it's really, I actually love our Eagle Scouts and the projects they, they do. I believe that they are hoping to, to raise the headstone on November 14th at 3 o'clock at Amawak Cemetery. This is very special. And Ben, I thank you for sending me the letter and yes, I will contribute.
Terrific. I spoke with Ben earlier this week, just a wonderful young man with a great project that he's doing. Councilman, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Roker, is that the conclusion of your report?
That's it.
Thank you. Councilman Diana, report to the town.
Good evening, everybody. Yeah, the, the, just to echo what Alice said, the Boy Scouts, the Eagle Scouts do a bunch of good work around town. Last year, we had John Davecchio, who did the, expanded the, the brick pathway around the flagpole at the Legion Hall. And we have another Eagle, Jay Gusick's son, who is going to be doing the repairs on all the benches in front of the old Rexall. He's going to be power washing them and staining them and repainting and so on and so forth. So, you know, they, they, they work hard for what they do and, and, and it's a laudable cause that, that, that they take on. And that's, you know, that's probably about all I have. I know we got a lengthy session tonight and then we got to go into close with the interviews. So I'm going to pass it on to the next.
Thank you very much, Councilman Diana. Councilman Patel, report to the town.
Very quick little thing, you know, our town and the town board members really is doing a great job educating and telling the people about the coronavirus and following the strict regulations in reference to the mask and, you know, social distance. This is really all credit to each and every resident who follow the. Only thing I would like to tell you is I urge wherever you go, maybe you tell the store people or something, they can have a little box. When they go out of store, maybe put it in a box instead of, you know, the cart or on, on, on the floor and like that, you know, that would be really nice to continuously mind it because I see too many of those. The second thing Supervisor, you and I, when you are, you know, first week or month of your, you know, new appointment as a Supervisor, you and I saw the gazebo and our, the request came in and somebody listened to and it was done. Partly the floor work was done. It was really nice. The DeVito Foundation helped something. And more need to be done. So thank you to DeVito family and each and everyone. Because 10 people cannot be going on a bicycle on a gazebo floor. So we have to do something like that to make sure that we protect the place where so many people come and see and enjoy our parks. So that's about it. Thank you and everybody be safe.
Thank you, Councilman Patel. And, and I agree with you completely. There's new signs up over at the track at Veterans Field that, that, and I want to thank our Parks and Rec Superintendent Jim Matarano for getting these up. But it clearly states no bike riding, no, no roller skating, no skateboarding. And we want to make sure that that fantastic facility remains as safe and enjoyable for everyone. And I also want to echo Councilman Patel's thanks to the DeVito Foundation and the DeVito family for always being there for the town of Yorktown and helping us out on these types of projects. I go to Councilman Lacterman.
I will, I will definitely echo that. Thank you to John DeVito and the DeVito Foundation, the family. I know when I called him and spoke with him and his son Kyle, it was like, what can we do for the, to get that gazebo going? And we're still, as Councilman Patel pointed out, there's still some things to finish. And we're talking about that with the Lions and Tommy, if there's any Eagle Scouts out there looking for a project, we're going to have to do some staining and some repair on the railings and all. So.
Okay.
That's, that's coming up. I also, you know, Alice, I had received that same email. Thank you for talking about it today. I actually had the privilege of meeting a group of the Tuskegee Airmen probably about 10 years ago. Yeah, at, out on Long Island at a, it might be Mitchell Airfield, which, which Paul Martin also happens to be very involved at, or in with their restoration. But I'm pretty sure that's where the, it's an aviation museum out there. And we would, I was working with a buddy of mine on a fundraiser out there, trying to raise some funds for the museum. And amazing to meet some of those Airmen and to hear some of the stories of, you know, what they went through and, and their, their fight for, for really being treated as equals and to be Airmen, just amazing. And, and I must say, like, at that point, all of these guys were in their 80s and look younger than I look now at 55. Just, just absolutely amazing. You know, I, I was going to talk about the parade today on Sunday. Matt, I know you covered that, which is going to be great. I know the Legion, if anyone did buy bricks for their brick memorial, they're usually presented on Memorial Day, but this year they were not able to do it. So they are going to do their brick presentation and unveiling right after the parade. If anyone did purchase a brick, I know you're invited to show up for that. And looking forward to Farm Weekend. I'm trying to, trying to get Maxine so we could bring her out to some of the farms around town. I know Betsy and Bob Stewart are, are involved as well with their, with their farm. And we ran into them yesterday at a wake. I would, I would also like to, you know, pay respect, longtime resident of Yorktown passed away the other day, Mr. Mark Brown and pay respect to his family. And, you know, they were very, very longtime residents in, in the town. Matter of fact, his daughter grew up with Carol. So went to grade school together. So it goes back a few years at that point. And I will put a reminder out that on Sunday, the 15th, will be the next Sunzley American Legion Breakfast at the American Legion Hall, runs 9 to 11. You can find out information on either the post or the Sunzley American Legion Squad 1009 website. It's a recommended $8 donation, which all goes for veteran services. But RSVPs are recommended as we have some seating limitations due to COVID.
Just an FYI with that, Ed and I will be cooking. That's pretty scary. Well, at least for me.
Tommy peels the potatoes.
I'm always on KP.
Thank you, Councilman Lacterman. I forgot to mention one other thing. I spent time yesterday with our Water Superintendent Kenny Rundle and Jeff Dalkey, who handles our water testing and compliance. We do, we did conclude, every three years, we do testing for, for, for lead and copper, happy to report for both for the Yorktown Water District, a Clean Bill of Health, as well as for the Kitchwan District. There was one test that was in compliant, which is being properly addressed. But, but overall, it was a very positive test result for the Kitchwan District as well. And, and as a reminder, the, we did install that testing station over by the Police Department. That came from a test result that came back in May that the residents were notified of. We, it was tested immediately following the, the test in question. And the, and the levels came back perfectly normal. They were tested again for the third quarter. Levels came back perfectly, perfectly normal. The fourth quarter test is, I believe, next week. We expect it to be perfectly normal. But, so just a very, it was a very educating two hours with our Water Department on, on the testing that continues to happen for our drinking water, which of course is a great priority for the town board. I want to go over to Dave Paganelly and have her.
I'm sorry, I had one last thing that I just want to speak about. And this will help me put Superintendent Paganelly on, on the hook with me. So the Sunzley American Legion is doing one thing. It's similar to what they do in Carmel where they have the Honor Row. We are going to be doing Honor Fields where flags can be sponsored to be put up from Memorial Day through Veterans Day. One of the things that we are trying to do to get this kicked off is by the time of the parade, have a few, a few of the flags where some people got a head on the program and wanted to purchase them now, put up for the rest of November for in honor of our veterans. And to have them up by Veterans Day because we are going to do our first mini field right across from the American Legion alongside the flagpole. I just spoke with our Parks and Recreation Supervisor, Jim Matarano Jr. And he loves the idea. So Dave and I will tomorrow get that, get that finished where we have at least a dozen of our flags printed or planted. And if anyone is interested in it, we will have information up on the Sunzley American Legion website shortly.
I'd like to buy one because I think they're beautiful and it's just, they're beautiful. When you go into Carmel, they're just, it's just wonderful to see. And it, it does a lot for our veterans and I thank you for that.
It's, it's a pleasure to be able to help with this and, and to see what we can do to, of course, honor our veterans. I know we, we, we're looking at a site across on the Shrub Oak side by, by, by our World War II Memorial, which has a lot of Dianas on it, as in, as in last name. And, and the 9/11 Memorial. So in between there, I know we need to talk with the library, but we're hoping that that's a possibility as well. And to really try to hit each of the hamlets in a, in a very significant spot where we can not only show the flags and get them seen, but also to give an area where we can go and reflect about our freedoms and those that have fought for our freedoms.
Great.
Can I say one word?
Yes.
I want to tell the Water Department as well as the entire town and the Town Board and our Water Superintendent, everybody else, Yorktown water is the best yet, okay? Sometimes you may see a little brown thing because, you know, some of the fire hydrants goes on or change the seasons like that. But we are very proud of our water from the Yorktown. If there was no good water, there will not be New York City. We supplied also water before, long, long time ago, 100 something ago, they used to carry the water from here to New York City. So thank you for the Yorktown Water Department for providing us safe drinking water.
Thank you, Councilman Patel. Highway Superintendent Paganelly, you're up.
Okay, yes, I will be working furtively tomorrow to get those flags up by the new flagpole so that they're up for Sunday when the veterans are out there to honor them properly. That being said, Highway is currently, we've put in 370 feet of drainage pipe in two days. Shout out to Tom McNulty and his crew, Mike Grasso overseeing that project as well on Granite Springs Road. The purpose of that is to get done prior to them paving it so that it'll be paved for winter. We all know what terrible shape the south side of Granite Springs Road is your heading, you know, as you're heading east towards Broad Street, has been horrendous for years. We've been putting patches on it, Band-Aids in essence. And, you know, we're, we're, we're trying to sequence the paving to be able to do that and get it done this winter. They are, with respect to paving, they did a very nice job in the center of town, you know, couple hundred thousand dollars worth of paving and no cost to our residents. And, you know, there's a few, a few low manholes. So we're going to go out there and address that. It's a bit bumpy. So that has to be repaired. What else do I have? Pat, the flags. Oh, Broad Street.
Broad Street.
Tomorrow, the, the milling, the company on Petrillo will be milling Broad Street. Okay, I'm sure most of our residents are familiar with milling by now. And they'll mill tomorrow. They will not pave until Monday. So please, even though school may not be in session over the weekend, drive slowly, you know, it's, it's a bit of a rough road surface. So that being said, also, we have completed our paving for the year. Very happy to report that we've milled three roads, which is great. Should result in less, will, will result in less cost for risers for catch basins and our manholes and our water valves, as well as prolonged, longer longevity of the road. Certainly a milled road will last longer than an overlay. And we're, you know, we're hoping to get to the point where financially, it will be beneficial for us to do roads correctly and it will not impact the amount of roads we can get done. So that being said, we're trying to figure out a way to take the millings that we are getting off the road. We're saving money by taking them rather than having the contractor dispose of them. But then they have some intrinsic value. So if we, we're looking at the possibility of getting a screener that we could screen the millings and then perhaps sell them to again, offset the cost of paving. So we'll be, you know, dead even hopefully, or making a little money and doing roads correctly. So that's about it.
Dave, can you give us a quick update? Did you touch on Hill and Veterans? Dave, can you give us a, Dave, can you give us a quick update? Did you touch on Hill and veterans?
Hill and veterans, we did um have a discussion on that today, actually earlier, Michael Quinn and myself. And um our major concern is that they don't close our roads prematurely. Um I made a suggestion, would there be a possibility on Hill Boulevard in particular as the work ropes, road work sequencing occurs? Since we have two lanes heading north and two lanes heading south, would there be a possibility of perhaps using one side, you know, one lane northbound and one lane southbound? Now, I I question the safety of that um a bit, but it would certainly make it easier, particularly for our residents in Jefferson Village. Um, you know, they they're they're sort of used used to a way of going shopping, going different ways. And we don't want to add, you know, complexity to the project that's already gonna be rather complex. Um Veterans Road, my concern, major concern there was, and I'll, we're actually, next week, we'll be getting four thousand tons of salt and a pug mill and a stacker and mixing our salt with magnesium chloride because we're expecting a lot of freeze thaw cycles this winter. Um the the Veterans Road project, I'm very feel very strongly about not putting, I figure an average storm, there's between a hundred and fifty and three hundred trucks. Not that we have that many trucks, but trips to the hill for our salt. So I'm not really enamored of the fact of in the evening putting our big trucks through the halion, which is a residential neighborhood and could be very dangerous, as well as I'm not thrilled about putting my trucks out onto Route thirty-five because that intersection, we know of Greenwood Street and thirty-five is a dangerous intersection, his speed on thirty-five is fifty-five miles an hour. So that being said, you know, I think we've reached an accord with respect to the company transit that is doing the covert, putting in um play, doing the work during the day and plating the roads during the darkness, which would be basically from, as we're seeing now, from five o'clock until, you know, six o'clock in the morning. So I think that would be a good solution with respect to, you know, winter weather activities for the Highway Department.
David, can you explain the type of work that the town is uh doing on veterans and um?
And Hill?
Yeah.
So what they're doing basically is replacing culverts that you could see. Hill Boulevard is not as noticeable in terms of its deterioration, but it has been in the top three or five in of of our list that um the Town Engineer, Mike, and myself have put forward to the um to the um grants for the New York State Grants to take care of Bridge and Culvert Grants. Um it'll be full replacement. Um you could see on Veterans Road, if you go down Veterans Road and you look to the right, right before you get to Greenwood Street, you could see the road starting to deteriorate, it's scouring away underneath. And, you know, I think that 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 I'm glad that we have arranged to do that one first, which is an imminent threat to public safety as opposed to doing Hill Boulevard first. So um we're waiting on approval from the Health Department. Um based on the meeting today, the engineering company cells um that's overseeing this project said that a best case scenario would be one week and a worst case scenario would be four weeks. So we don't want to close the road prematurely, um you know, close it at the last minute. We had agreed, um Michael Quinn and myself agreed with Transit that next week they could put up some signs, message boards that would say basically, you know, slow road construction ahead just to sort of acclimate people to the fact that this is going to be happening.
Okay.
And there's a, there's a presentation on the town's website that the Town Engineer gave at our last work session uh which residents can have access to, obviously, to learn more about the project, uh what, when some of the additional details that uh that we're discussing. Councilman Diana, you want to speak?
Yeah, just gonna ask, Dave, did you think about uh uh give any more thought to putting a uh a weight limit on that road for the time being?
Yes, actually, um we are having a public safety meeting, a traffic safety meeting next Wednesday, I believe, right? Me, myself and um Officer Roar. And I think at that point, we should we should discuss that and then go ahead and do that. Certainly, I think that it, you know, in particular, I'm very concerned about the buses from Bosse's that they're, you know, they're they're coming across, they're coming into town. And my my understanding is based on their original site plan that they were supposed to take a different route and not come directly through town. Yet, we, as as Councilwoman Roker knows, we've we've visited this numerous times and, you know, I I believe they have some autonomy with respect to, if I'm not, if I'm not correct, Alice, right? There's that they they have some autonomy with respect to that scenario as as we anticipate, you know, as we expect it to be.
Yeah, okay, very good. So we'll see you next week.
Yep, thank you, thank you.
I have a question for Dave. Uh the Granite Spring Road, now, actually, I haven't walked, I had, I'm not driven in a couple, you know, four, five days or so. So it is going to be paved this year because somebody, you know, remember you mentioned that you have to do the drainage and all that? So then it is done now because, you know, I'm gonna see those people.
The drainage is seven hundred and eighty feet of drainage, um twenty-foot pipes um that that are going in.
It's done?
No, no, we just started it actually yesterday and
Okay.
Excuse me, um we are at at current just under four hundred feet. So I'm I'm relatively confident that with the weather being what it's going to be, that we will be able to finish our drainage by Tuesday of next week, you know, if the weather holds. And um, you know, shout out to the job the guys are doing out there. And we'll, then we will get it paved this year prior to winter.
Oh, that's good news. I'm gonna tell them that those who ask for here, okay. Because Gregory and Danny Wood, they are always asking, you know, they're, when we're gonna do, I totally miss it. Uh then it will be done, it will be done for good and they will be doing a very good job. Thank you.
Uh thank you, appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, Dave, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Yep, thank you.
All right, we're gonna move to poet laureate, John McMullen. Is John on tonight? You don't see him on, okay? Well, we wish John and his family the best. We'll move on to uh Personnel. We have two resolutions. We're gonna accept the resignation of Scott Rose from the Parks Department effective October thirtieth, twenty twenty. And we're going to appoint Kira Brunner to the position of Office Assistant Auto Systems. A motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Both motions carry. We will now go to Courtesy of the Floor.
I'm gonna start with Susan Seagull.
Okay. Good evening, Susan. How are you? Susan, how are you?
I'm sorry, are you ready for Courtesy of the Floor?
Yes, we are.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I was I was distracted for a minute. Okay, uh thank you very much. Um I'm asking the Board tonight to table a vote on the planned designed overlay district law uh so that the Board has more time to correct several glaring deficiencies in the current version, okay? Why the rush to adopt an imperfect law? As I said at the public hearing, the law needs more detail. Let me give you some examples. The law creates three overlay districts, Shrub Oak, Jefferson Valley, and the Bear Mountain Triangle. But there are no district boundaries. So what constitutes the Shrub Oak District? From Strawberry Road to Bogus Street? What are the north-south boundaries? The same question applies to Jefferson Valley, from where to where? Standards, the law very clearly says that in applying the law, the Planning Board shall apply the standards in sections three hundred two fifty-five through three hundred two fifty-nine, as applicable for each planned district. But there's no text in any of those sections. We've been told that the standards will come later, but when? What happens if a developer comes in with a plan next week or next month? What standards will apply then? In the absence of any standards for the three very different districts, the current law says that the Planning Board can vary several provisions of the zoning code up to sixty percent. Has the Board considered what a sixty percent variance means? What would a sixty percent variance look like? It means the Planning Board could approve a five-story building where three stories is the current limit. Does the Board really think that a five-story building is appropriate on East Main Street in Jefferson Valley or facing Route Six in Shrub Oak? The law also allows a sixty percent increase in density, a reduction in the number of parking spaces, squeezing buildings closer together, and less open space. Is the question of uses? The law also says that it regulates the uses within the overlay districts. But what uses is the, what what uses changes is the Board considering for each of the three districts? You haven't told us. The law says nothing. Will the zoning code have to be amended if there's a change in the allowed uses? And there's another issue. The the law says that the Planning Board can adjust the regulations and reduce procedural requirements in other town laws. Does that mean that the Planning Board can waive the requirements of the wetlands, steep slopes, or tree laws? Does, what about the law governing the requirement for a public informational hearing? Will that be waived? I ask again, why the rush to adopt an imperfect law? Is there a developer waiting in the wings who wants sixty-four density for a five-story building? I'm sure I'm not the only person in Yorktown who remembers all too vividly when an application for a major development was introduced a few years ago within a month of the Town Board approving a generous tax incentive law. So I'm urging the Board to take the time, correct the many deficiencies in the current version, to take what uh it just as much as only as long as one month and come back with a law that works for Yorktown, a law that I'll be very, very happy to support. Thank you very much. Thanks.
Thank you, Susan. Anyone else for Courtesy of the Floor?
I'm not sure on this phone number, but I'm gonna put them on.
Hello? Oh, I think they dropped off. Is there anybody else for Courtesy of the Floor?
No, I only have um John DeVito and Fred.
Motion closed, Courtesy of the Floor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any comments from the Board?
Yeah, I wanted to comment on what Susan said. I did um, I did have, I do have some questions regarding that law. I think I asked the last time we met, when we would, I asked when we, maybe I learned to speak English again. I asked about timing on when we would be coming up with standards and and I was told that we would do that soon. I I get, I get, I guess I agree. Um I agree with you that it is not the Planning Board that should have a sole jurisdiction over this law. And I did have a question as to whether or not there are any developers who are, who have given in an application to take use of this particular law.
Are you asking the, are you just asking generally?
Not around?
I'm sorry, John's not, no, I just texted him to see if he can jump on. Um uh I I am personally not aware of any application that's been put forth.
Actually, Matt, if I can interject, that that there is.
Courtesy of the Floor is closed.
I'm sorry, but I have piece of this.
But Cur- but Courtesy of the Floor is closed.
Let us talk to John. I want to hear from John.
I think that uh there that, and it may or may not affect it. Uh then, but it's not something that's been waiting in the wings, but something that's been before us before over by uh Lake Osceola uh with the
Of course, you're probably planning for it.
With uh, yeah, Roberto, Roberto. So that's not waiting in the wings, but it has been before it, they may or may not be able to. But, you know, I I look at, you know, we're we're talking about a law to allow flexibility. So I don't think that we can say we're gonna be flexible to the point of ironing out every possibility. Otherwise, why have the law just changed the zoning? Uh it's a flexibility standard. And to to try to say, hey, you know, we're gonna take everything and make sure every single thing is is accounted for, we, what are we gonna have, a five-hundred-page law on the books? So, I, you know.
With um, I I I agree with Matthew. I think this law is long overdue. However, when you say you've got three areas, you gotta tell us where within Shrub Oak, Jefferson Valley, or the triangle, where where this is, what what part of this area?
So John, John Tegger is calling in. Uh Diana, if you can let him in when he does call in.
You know, I want to be flexible. I think, Matthew, I I thought it was a great idea, but you get.
John's in right now. John, can you, can you just answer a couple of questions for us, please? Um number one?
I'll do my, do my best, sure.
Is there an application that's been submitted to take advantage of the the overlay districts?
In my office for the Planning Board?
For the overlay district, no.
No.
Okay, perfect.
Number, number two is, is can you, so there, within the law, as you and I both know, we've discussed this multiple times. Within the law, it, we pulled in pieces of the Comprehensive Plan, which labels or or identifies uh specific hamlets in the town of Yorktown where we'd like to see these. It also leaves room for other hamlets that weren't part of the Comprehensive Plan that we want to address as well. Um so how do the stand uh of what we're trying to pass and that's on the agenda tonight, would they be applicable to the three hamlets that are listed in the law?
The, what you're, what you're adopting, possibly adopting tonight?
Correct.
No, you you won't be able to process any applications until each individual hamlet and mapped development district is adopted by the Board.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilman Patel.
Uh John, really, the, you know, let me just say, I support the overlay uh district concept. It's really good. But we have to have a standard for each three area we are talking about, you know? So, you know, uh are you gonna follow the same standard? Yes, you have a flexibility and we wanna do whatever. Whatever the the developer come, we will entertain and, you know, just follow the law. Because Town Board has to be, Town Board has to be responsible for uh do doing this kind of thing, you know? Before we pass, uh give somebody permit, and how can you pass the law if somebody had an application, you know? So good thing I found out that there is no applicant right now, you know?
Now, John, let me ask you, let me ask you some other things that were raised, and I I think it's best that we refer these questions to you. In regards to
Thank you.
To wetlands and tree and 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 other, other um
Sorry.
parts of the code, uh can the Planning Board waive those goodbye as part of an application process?
Can they waive what, what goodbye?
Whether it's something like the tree code, the new tree law, wetlands.
No, no.
Any of the environmental protections that are currently part of our code?
No, all, and all of the standalone sections of our code, for instance, tree chapter, wetland chapter, they're all have their own separate chapters and they are in full force and effect in anything that we do.
Thank you.
Anything, including these, will still, they'll still be in full force and effect.
Thank you. And right now, if an application, if the Board, just to be crystal clear, if the Board decides to move forward tonight and and approve what's on the agenda and an application is submitted, right? Is the Planning Board able to entertain that application? Or does it have to wait until the details of the design district for that specific hamlet are approved by this Town Board?
Uh you you have to wait until the district is mapped and that the specific regulations for that district are developed and adopted by the Board. Uh there is, there is language in this version that speaks to that. There's a sentence in, I think it's uh paragraph B towards the end that does say something to that effect. I don't know, I don't, I didn't commit to memory the exact language, but until those um sections of code are in place and the maps are adopted by the Board, that no application can go forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. Thank you, John.
So all of our stuff is covered then, um and then as far as that that goes. Um and and the districts that would be looking to do that would probably be the ones over by Roberta's property, John. And um um there's not, there's not a lot of of wiggle room except for the the Bear Mountain Triangle, really, where where you can squeeze stuff in, you know? Bear Mountain Triangle and the and the the area that you're talking about, yes, and they were all, they're also in the Comprehensive Plan. So they're already have theoretically suggested mapping. So those maps will come before you at some point. Uh they may be tweaked a little bit, you can add to them, you know, there's all, you you're in control, you're driving the bus on this, so.
Yep.
Thank you, John. May I say something?
Sure, sure.
They have to have really, everything. They have to have really everything in the law before you approve any application. So what's so hurry? It's gonna take another two weeks or so to pass it uh really uh comprehensive, uh you know, the uh. The the law instead of just passing tonight.
Councilman, it's not gonna take two weeks to 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 go through all the hamlets. Because we again, we're trying to we want to the idea is to customize each of these design districts to each hamlet. So you're not going to be able to go through each hamlet within a two week period and and customize these. There's a big difference between, as you know. There's a big difference between uh Crampon, then there is Trebo, Jefferson Valley versus the Heights. And again, this allows us to take our time in identifying what makes each of these hamlets unique and customize these districts. To really enhance each of these hamlets in their own unique way.
I'm looking, I'm so looking forward to this because I think that. And in all of the years that I've sat here, uh I've never seen anything like this. And I think it's important, it's needed. It's twenty twenty. Um and we need to there the the hamlets you cited need an update and. I think I'm doing these. Different overlay districts in different parts of the each area will. Or may provide something great, but the why does to um do the law and I think it's a it's at least giving um. Applicants or people what we wanted to attract was businesses in New York City.
Right. Right. And I and I think that I from the conversations that I've had, I think that there is a lot of interest and people are excited. And I don't think I don't think that should deter us from from doing our.
I agree. I agree. Um you can't go forward. Um so. This at least says we are working toward what you need.
I I agree that really it just that's the way, you know, we are not telling you, we are not, there is no red light. We have a green light, right? But sometime, you know, the green light and the red light, you go first red light and then the green. The green not, you know, that then then I think, you know, and what is so hurry? It's not much time left, you know, I mean, you know, we are just ready to go. And everybody agrees that we must support an overlay district, uh you know, concept and 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 the thing, so why don't we do it right, you know? This is what I asked the John before that each individually we look different, but we gotta have a standard, okay? Twelling cheese is a food, it's a standard.
Each each one will have difference. Each of one will be customized with different standards. Uh to that 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 really pairs nicely, that complements nicely. With the integrity of those hamlets and that's what we're trying. That's what we're trying to balance is is we're trying to balance. Protecting the integrity of our neighborhoods and our communities and these ham and and these hamlets, but also offering um uh the flexibility that businesses may need. In order to come to Yorktown and succeed. And that's what we're that's that's what we're trying to balance out here. And this is the first step in that entire process.
Yeah, I I I'm not. Really.
And and then we decide to.
Anything else I can answer for you guys?
John, thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
Thank you, John.
Much pleasure, guys. If you need me again, just call.
Thank you, John. Have a great.
Thanks, John.
Okay.
Thank you for that explanation.
No, I'm happy to. And I know that again, this is something that we're going to be working through together as a board. We're gonna we've got a great planning department who's who's been. In in putting this together. And um and I think that the town should be very excited for us to take this step, but also more excited as we take, you know, additional steps. Focused on those specific hamlets. Uh I understand John McMullin uh just joined us. So before we go to our public hearing decisions, why don't we have John join us uh for as our poet laureate? Good evening, John. He's connecting to audio.
Wood and wood. I'm sorry, I don't know why I'm having trouble with this. The sleek glass steel and wood box designed by says our Pelly that is.
John, you're on. How are you? I think you've got some background noise.
Open in two thousand six, replacing.
I'll have to go on my computer. I'll be back.
Is it time? Sorry.
No, no, stay.
It it sits downtown at the corner of Nicolet Mall and South Fourth Street, not far from the eighteen eighty nine Romanesque Revival lumber exchange.
Do you want to? Ready? Okay. Uh I think John, I think John's trying to multi zoom, so we'll we'll. I think I think we'll move on to uh public hearings until John's ready. Uh so based on our last decision, we're gonna move on to public hearing decisions. Uh we're gonna entertain a motion. To adopt lead agency negative declaration and and secret for amending chapter three hundred entitled zoning by adding a new article. Entitled Plan Design District Overlay Zones.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No. I I I'm I'm gonna oppose until uh this thing is clear, you know, that you have to have really all the specific. Bundles, you know, the standard for the entire thing. Yes, you will have a different standard, but some standard has to be really the standard. And then what is so hurry, you know, another two, three weeks? I think we should do it right, you know?
That's the but we are passing this, the general standards, and then we're going into individual standards for each hamlet. That's exactly what the legislation does. Okay, so we have we have four four uh I one against motion carries. We're gonna adopt local law thirteen of twenty twenty amending chapter three hundred entitled zoning by adding a new article entitled Plan Design District Overlay Zones. Motion.
So moved.
Second.
Can we have a discussion?
Yeah.
I am going to agree with this because I want to send a. A signal to people outside who want to move to Yorktown that we are we're going to do this. And second of all, the planning board can't do any work until we do our work.
Right.
I think that for me, all this is is a signal to people, come to Yorktown. We're not those fuzzy old people anymore. We will um we will look at stuff. Um so um that's where I am.
I I agree with you, Allison, and it's a um. It it can always, no matter what's there, we can always tweak it when we need to, and we're lead agency on it anyhow, if I'm not mistaken, right supervisor? So it's um, you know, eh no matter what, it still has to come to us.
Well, it can't go anywhere.
Right. Well, the whole thing, though, is again, as we heard from our director of planning, if there were an application put forward tomorrow, it goes nowhere.
Right.
Nowhere. But we are, but I believe we are making a very strong statement.
I agree.
To woman Roker's point, that we are very open minded, that we want to see. Uh new and exciting projects come to Yorktown. We want to modernize Yorktown. We want to grow our tax base. And we want to support a strong business climate. And I think that's what this signals to Councilwoman Roker's point. Uh to to those that we've been that we continue to try to attract to the town. Any other discussion?
No, I agree. That's, you know, the whole purpose of doing this is uh Councilman Roker pointed out.
Okay. All right, so then we'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Roker mo- motion. We have a second. I think it was from Councilman Diana. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Yes, uh all I want to make my statement is I support the overlay district uh concept. But I'm not ready to work this concept the way it is currently written. I would like to have really the specific standard. Before we move forward. Because, you know, this is really the big, big change. We never had it like this before, you know? So I I am, I you know, I I repeat again. I support the this really very good, important overlay project, okay? Concept is really good, but I I want to be everything in law before we move forward. And you know, it's it's not much left, you know? I mean, we are talking about what is a long time, three different districts, and we have not done anything yet, you know? I mean, I I have a, you know, my view.
Thank you, Councilman Patel. Again, I'd point out the fact that the law that you're talking about does set the generic standards that we've discussed. And then it goes into specific standards for each hamlet, which is what we've talked about earlier. And the planning board cannot entertain any application until those standards are passed by the town board for each hamlet. So that motion carries four to one. We will move on to the next. Item on the agenda, adopting lead agency negative declaration in secret for amending chapter three hundred entitled zoning by modifying session three hundred dash seventy five A. Uh we do have Fred Kolsch and John DeVito on the line in case the board has any questions, but this is again regarding uh the uh this the storage law that we have discussed. Uh specifically for them for to help fill the vacant Toys R Us building. Any discussion needed for the board?
No.
Nope, nope.
Motion.
No, so I'm moved.
We have a motion. Second, we have so it's Councilman Diana motion, Councilwoman Roker second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
So can I just ask you something here for a clarification? Depending on on the first law or this is a separate?
This is a separate item that we've discussed uh before, Councilman Patel. This is in regards to the storage. Uh uh this is allows.
Okay, I I I get mixed up, okay? Okay, go ahead. Yeah, yeah, I didn't didn't look it up right clearly. Okay.
Councilman Patel, would you like to cast your vote in the affirmative or in opposition?
Yes. My vote is yes.
Motion carries unanimously. And then we will adopt local law fourteen of twenty twenty amending chapter three hundred entitled zoning by modifying section three hundred dash seventy five A. Motion by Councilwoman Roker, second by Councilman Diana. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Very good. You have to ask Fred or uh Mr. Kolsch or Mr. DeVito any questions? Uh we're gonna move on to another exciting project that uh we're gonna this that we're we're awarding tonight. This is to award a bid. For the solar carport at Granite Knowles Recreation and Sports Complex, something the town board has been working diligently on. Uh over the summer. Um I do want to speak specifically before we vote to this to some of the items in the uh in the resolution. This will be a twenty five year lease license and or lease agreement with HESP Solar. We received a number of uh proposals and the town board, uh the entire town board feels that HESP HESP so solar provided. Uh the most comprehensive package for the town. Um this includes the construction of a solar electrical system and four. Uh EV electric vehicle charging stations at Granite Knowles Sports Complex. They've also it also includes a public marketing education campaign, comprehensive outreach to local schools and an upfront lump sum payment. Uh that will, we hope, allow us to pave the parking lot at Granite Knowles Sports Complex before construction commences. And I'll entertain a motion to pass the resolution awarding the bid.
Okay, can I just can I ask just one question right now?
Yep, yes, sir, of course. I apologize.
Okay, so we have a lump sum to do the, you know, the the what we want to do with the pay. Is there any income after, you know, monthly income right away or this is in in lieu of uh, you know, not getting money right away?
No, so there will be there will be an upfront lump sum.
For the public to know.
Yes, and then like there's a there's an agreement that'll bring in revenue annually uh to the town from HESP. Now that the specifics of which um will be detailed in the um. Uh in the agreement itself, we've negotiated in good faith as much as we can to this point in time and HESP is now. Uh requesting that the bid be awarded in order for us to continue with our our negotiations. But again, the pavement lump sum for payment was a request from the Parks and Recreation Commission, so we're very happy that they're willing to accommodate that. Uh and then there will be, like we've talked about before, annual revenue coming into the town uh based on based on the um. Uh excuse me, based on based on the uh revenue from the agreement that we are going to have our town attorney negotiate further.
This is a great, um I think a great project. Um I look forward to the spring when um they'll begin work and and I'm. Greatly appreciate the fact that they are going to do an educational program, not just for adults, but in the schools as well.
I also just I agree with you completely, Councilwoman Roker, and I also just want to point out the fact that again, uh at the very end, the agreement. Is subject to final approval by the town board. So once the final agreement is reached, it'll be brought back to the town board for final approval.
Motion.
Second.
Motion from Councilwoman Roker, second from Councilman Diana. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And I just said some, you know, uh this is the investment. Made by taxpayer Yorktown, Yorktown thirty dollar a price of price of a lesson of pepperoni pizza per year. This is the dividend will be given and it will be coming in year after year. It's just such a great thing. And it is a credit to the entire community and the taxpayer and 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 board. And each and everyone involved in this one is really wonderful project.
But I think if I could also just add a quick comment that I think this uh is gonna be a milestone project, uh I believe for the state. Um but I also think it it really. I think it really also shows this town board's um focus on proper management. I think it shows our focus on trying to come up with creative ways to raise revenue without raising taxes. And I think it also shows our commitment to helping the environment. And by the way, uh it'll help individual utility ratepayers of Con Ed because it'll be a community. It'll be a CCA uh program, a community solar program, so that would allow Con Ed customers who enroll in the program to see their utility rates. Cut by ten percent. So it really is a a win across the board. Um in so many, so many ways that I think it really shows that the true. Uh intrinsic balance you see behind me, the pro- progress of preservation, and I think that this project echoes that uh that sentiment in a lot of ways. Uh you have John McMullin back, our poet laureate. John, you want to try to, I think we got you on mute. Um if you wouldn't mind muting?
I'm unmuted.
Perfect.
Okay, twenty twenty, a Halloween of a year. Uh the year really started in in January, but most of us didn't find out about the virus until March. Then it was confusion and disinformation to abound and the acrimony began to build. Then there were lockdowns with a uh sitting home and watching television and seeing the national tragedy as a black man received a fate. That most thought would not have happened had he been white. Then there were protests that began the eluding, eluding and rioting as the loonies and crooks took over our television sets. And polarized us further. Those loonies might have come from the left, but they they were soon offset on the right by Queen on and the Proud Boys. Then came the campaigns and the so called political debates, which became rants and accusations. Then finally came the election that apparently settled nothing as recounts and lawsuits. Will probably take us right up to inauguration day of twenty twenty one. As we proceed down this unprecedented path, it it seems that the hostility may get even worse. Is it too much to ask that no matter how how much we each want our candidate to win, that remember that Republicans or Democrats, never Trumpers or Trump lovers. We're all Americans and Yorktowners, and this is what is supposed to unite us. Our forefathers fought through terrible wars, putting patriotism before party. But let's not disgrace this legacy.
Thank you, John.
John, very good.
Thank you, John.
Very good.
Thank you for listening.
All right, we're gonna go to resolutions. Uh we're gonna we'll take them together. First resolution is to cancel the town board work session meeting on November twenty fourth, twenty twenty. The second resolution is to authorize the supervisor to execute a license agreement with Yorktown Jazz Number Two LLC for to utilize certain town property abutting. YJ LLC's property and Old Crampon Road. Authorize and um excuse me, that that goes back to last week's town board work session regarding the uh the the construction happening at Lowe's Pad A. Authorize town clerk to advertise a request for proposals for professional engineering firm to assist the town with a sanitary sewer evaluation survey.
We go back to that one supervisor at the end?
You want to hold that one?
Yeah, just hold that one till the end. I have a quick question. Go ahead.
Why don't you do? Why don't we just have a discussion on it now then?
All right, how long how long are they out? Because we have a clock ticking on this.
Out for what?
Um when they get sent out, how long before I should say how long before they come back? Is it ten days or thirty days or?
Well, I think we all understand that the top the clock's ticking, but as we heard. From the multiple presentations from our engineering department, we're not going to be able to do the work necessary. Until we put out an RFP because of the the threshold, the procurement policy. until we put out an RFP because of the the threshold. The procurement policy will not allow us to move forward in this manner without an RFP. We're looking at an anywhere range from a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, potentially seven hundred thousand dollars.
Agreed. I I know, I'm just wondering how long before they have to respond back with this, just as a.
Diana would know that. Diana, do you know?
We haven't picked the dates for that yet. It depends on when you approve it, when we put it into the paper, so that all that has to go with it. So, I mean, we can bring it back as soon as six days, or we can keep it out a month. That's really up to the town.
Okay, all right.
Let's do the easy, the shorter one.
Yeah, the shorter the better, I think, with this, this moving forward.
Any other discussion on that one?
No.
No?
As long as we get it done quickly, you know, I mean, it's okay.
Right. Again, the, but it's, it's, we're we're taking it up in in an effort to have it ready for the work to be done this spring. And that's, that's the, this coming spring, twenty twenty-one. Authorize the controller process following tax surcharge proceedings for parcel known as section thirty-six oh six, block two, lot seventy-eight point eleven, no, uh, which is Orchard View Court. And to release of an escrow deposit for street opening permit number zero one eight dash zero one five and the amount of two thousand dollars. Take a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion's carry. That concludes the business before the board. We're going to adjourn and, uh, I'm, we're going to, excuse me, we're going to go into executive session to take up interviews for employment, um, of a particular person. And then we will adjourn our meeting following executive session.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
I'll be right back.
All right.
Aye.
Second.
Yorktown. Have a good night. Stay safe.
Good night, Yorktown.
Thank you.